Test.
So next we're going to configure the Zoom video source. So with a little arrow next to the video here, I just need to select that. And then I need to choose the New Tech NDI video option right up the top. I'm going to select this. So as you can see on my laptop here, I now have my...
6:03.
Hello? Can anybody hear me?
We can hear you.
Yes. Okay. Alisa?
Yes.
Okay, and Dennis, yes?
Yes, I hear you.
Okay. Trusty Raga?
Yes. Can you do a roll call because I couldn't hear Felix at all? Hello, nobody can hear me?
We can hear you. Dennis?
Yes, hear me?
Yes.
We can't, we can't hear you guys. We can only hear whoever is right in front of that computer.
Okay. That's okay. Elson's getting closer. This is Lynn. I'm helping out with Zoom.
We wait until anybody, uh, particular, like, so six or later.
We can't hear whoever that is. It sounds like Charlie Brown. It's just mumbling.
Okay. Section 60... 6D. They are taking a roll call to be removed from the agenda. We have a first and a second.
Well, wait, we don't, we...
Wait.
We have no idea what, uh, we can't hear anything.
That's unfortunately how it is every time a township meeting is taking place on Zoom. We've been saying this for months. This is how it is every township meeting.
Ross, can you hear anything?
No, cannot hear anything.
I hear somebody talking, but you can't really make out what they're saying. It's just like a background noise.
Have they even called the meeting to order?
Yes.
Well, I don't, I don't want to be marked present for a meeting that I can't hear anything for. So can you please not mark me present until we can hear? Uh, because we can't hear, so we can't participate in the meeting right now. So can we, like, I don't know, can we recess until you can fix the sound?
Sound is working fine here.
Yep, but Trusty Raga and I are on Zoom and we can't hear, so we can't participate in a meeting that we can't hear.
Lynn, the only person we can hear clearly is Lynn.
Yeah, Lynn. We can only hear Lynn.
Okay, we're going to recess it for 10 minutes, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you guys. It makes no sense to me. I mean, I can hear them. They should be able to hear me. I do it with seniors all the time, so...
Lynn, we can hear you clearly because you were sitting in front of the computer. We can hear the people that are in attendance in the background because all you hear is mumbling.
This is Clerk Ali. Dennis?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, can you hear me clearly? This is Clerk Ali.
Yes, I can hear you clearly, yes.
Okay, so I'm going to start with roll call for quorum. We've already taken roll call. Trusty Burgess, Trusty Oliver, and Supervisor George are here at the Township Office. And I am going to take roll call now. Trusty Raga?
Uh, here via Zoom.
Trusty Benford?
Here via Zoom.
And then the next item is the agenda to be amended to exclude, remove section 6D, the portion that covers Ross Sackler, to be removed from the agenda. We have a first from Trusty Burgess and a second from Trusty Oliver. So take a roll call vote on that.
Okay, so the, so here's the issue because I have a, a change to the agenda as well. And so why, that's why this is difficult because we're trying to participate in this meeting, but we can't hear.
Can you hear now?
I, we can hear you, but I couldn't hear what they were saying. So are we in the discussion because I also have a change to the agenda?
Sure, yes.
Or requested change.
Discussion?
Okay, so I would like, I see that we have public comments at the beginning. So I'd like to amend the current motion on the floor to add public comments to the end as well, so that we have public comments at the beginning and public comments at the end prior to the adjournment of the meeting.
Uh, Ross, do we need a first and second on that as well?
Yes.
Okay.
No, I'll second it though.
Okay. All right, so we have two motions to amend the agenda, the first one being to remove section 6D, the portion that covers Ross Sackler. Can we vote on that and then we can vote on the second?
What is it to remove Ross Sackler? What, what is that? I mean, we didn't, we didn't hear what it was in the beginning, so I just wanted to verify what it is that we're talking about.
So they, the trustees want to remove that section from being discussed in this evening's meeting. Do you have a copy of the agenda in front of you?
Yeah, I just didn't, I wasn't able to hear what, what the second word.
It's the, the item is just being removed from the agenda. And we have a first and second on that. So I need to take a roll call vote. Is that okay?
Uh, if you're asking PM.
All right, Trusty Raga?
Yes.
Trusty Benford?
Yes.
Trusty Oliver? Trusty Burgess? Supervisor George? Okay, then we have a second item that's being amended to have public comments at the beginning and at the end of the meeting. And we have a first from Trusty Benford and a second from Trusty Raga. So I'm going to take roll call on that. Trusty Raga?
Yes.
Trusty Benford?
Yes.
Trusty Oliver? That was a no. Trusty Burgess? That was a no, in case you didn't hear. And Supervisor George? We have three noes on adding public comments to the back of the agenda for the meeting, sorry. Public comments?
Can I have a point of parliamentary inquiry, please?
Supervisor? I'm addressing the chair of the meeting.
He's addressing you, Supervisor.
Yeah. Can, can Supervisor? It is my understanding that electronic attendees have to be able to hear a meeting, otherwise it is considered an unlawful meeting. So can you please take a recess to confer with our legal counsel? Because I know that I'm having a difficult time hearing and I, I, because I know somebody is speaking right now and, and I, I, while I appreciate Clerk Ali, she's going to have a difficult voice at the end of the night if she has to repeat every public comment that people are trying to say and we want to be able to participate. So can we recess so that you can speak with our legal counsel on how we're going to be able to conduct this meeting so that everybody on the Zoom can hear? Because you have like 15 people on the Zoom and I'm, I'm trying to advocate on their behalf so that they're able to hear tonight. You, you guys can hear us, but we can't hear you. We can't hear everybody in the room. We can hear whoever is very close to the computer.
So we have... Yes, we have a gentleman here who wants to make a public comment and he is standing next to the laptop. Let us know if you cannot hear him.
Okay, because I don't want to, I don't want to feel like I'm being rude and interrupt everybody. So do you want me to speak into the chat when we can't hear? Clerk Ali, what's the best way for me to tell you when we are not able to hear?
If you find that there's a pause between the comments, then go ahead and let us know. Allow the gentleman to start speaking now.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, the Democratic Party had their caucus here in the Levy Center on Tuesday, the first, and we'd like to, uh, thank, uh, Kelly Lizardo because she did a fantastic job setting up the, uh, the Levy Center for our caucus, and so I'd like to thank her for that. But secondly, your comment about not hearing, uh, and it would be an illegal meeting, that you would then say that the last three meetings that you've held, the last three months, would be illegal because there were dozens of comments about how we could not hear what was being said at the meeting. So if you're going to say this one is illegal, you're saying the last three monthly meetings are also illegal.
I have a public comment.
My name is Jerry Morris, resident of Bolingbrook from 1976. And I'm here tonight because I was here a year ago and the same comedy show was going on. Anybody in this village that follows and dates township and watches what happens on social media and the disrespect that is shown to individuals, I ask that these trustees leave their personal feelings at the door and deal with what you're supposed to be... and deal with what you're supposed to deal with, and that is taxpayers' money that we put in there. I have seen McHenry's whip. I have seen her expose people that have misused funds. And all you get in return is just a tax and name call. And if appearing in a photo with a friend makes you suspect, then we have a lot to learn about everybody sitting in this room. Because I guarantee you, you have friends in this community, you have fellow workers in this community, and if because one of them comes to this board and asks for money for their organization, and you are seen sitting with them, does not mean that there is collusion and it shouldn't be talked about. Leave the personal feelings at the door. And respect one another as we hoped that you would when you took the position. And just deal for the village of Bolingbrook and the DuPage Township, and leave the other mess at home. Thanks.
I have a public comment.
Please state your name.
John Kraft.
Okay.
My comment is, I agree with the first speaker that if people cannot hear all the conversation of the board members, the meeting cannot continue. That goes the same for this meeting and any of the previous meetings. Um, that's what the new change in the Open Meetings Act says. I had something else, give me a second. As far as the conversation on the investigative report, if there is a conversation, I suggest you talk about page eight. All the other pages were posted on a Facebook page, except for page eight. And I think you might find page eight enlightening, or we might find it enlightening, because we know there has to be a reason that page eight was never posted on that Facebook group. Um, probably because it might substantiate other things that happened. Uh, so please, discuss page eight. That's all I have, thanks.
I'd like to make a comment.
State your name, please.
Lee Bush Jr. Um, I just wanna say, um, that I recently sent an email with, uh, some concerns to this board and supervisor George about COVID-19 that I'd witnessed and I have known about. Um, unfortunately, the only email that I received back was from Ms. Benford, including trustee Raga. Uh, this is very concerning for me that this township, in my view, has not been following the proper protocol per the CDC. And I just wanted answers or clarifications for the citizens and also myself and my family. Due to the lack of response or feeling of disrespect from the lack of follow-through, I did send an email to the Edgar County Watch Dogs, so that this would be taken serious by this board. However, three days now since sending this, I still have yet to hear from anybody except for Ms. Benford and Mr. Raga. Except for a Facebook messenger from a trustee that, and I quote, says, "Wow, really? You playing with ECW also? SMH." For those of you that don't know, shaking my head, nothing surprises me anymore. This is very disappointing that a citizen can bring issues to this board, and this is their response. If it's that way for me, how is it for everybody else that comes forward to this board?
It sucks, to be honest, it really, really sucks. I hate this meeting, I hate it.
I'm about to serve over 450 families in this township.
Yo, host, I have a song for you. All the other kids with the pumped up... Kenneth, you look great, man. I like trim. Oh, oh yeah, I'm sorry, you're wrong. Over 9,000!
Thank you so much.
Wait, I have a, there's a song for you.
My God! Oh my God, oh my God!
Turn off chat and mute everybody, except for the people talking, please.
Thank you. Nah, Barbara, can I get a yee-haw, can I get a hallelujah from you real quick? Barbara, please.
If you're talking to me, you're not getting a hallelujah from me. I think this meeting has become a joke.
Please, very sure, please!
I love memes. Obama loves memes. Just know that.
Kenneth, can I get a, can I get a, can I get a...
Somebody needs to mute everyone.
No, Barbara, Barbara, sit down, sit down, Barbara, sit down.
I don't know whose idea of a joke this is, but they should be ashamed of themselves.
I am very sorry, the, the Zoom program only allows me to kick them out. As quick as I kicked them out, they were jumping back in. I could not beat them, would not allow them.
But the, have the Zoom meeting set up that they're put in a waiting room?
No, Barbara, please, please, you have double chin, please!
Who's that?
This is absolutely ridiculous that I cannot finish my statement.
Well, it's not our fault. Please, it's not our fault.
Alright, fine, I'll leave him, I'll leave him.
Take a motion to the, uh, the current meeting.
Second. I don't know what's going on, but I, I need to, I probably reset a little to figure out what's going on.
Is it Tetris?
I don't know.
Alright, well, we have a motion in a second on the floor, prepare for the meeting.
The attorney said that, that the attorneys picked out, or he backed away, so I don't know.
There's already been a motion in the second for adjournment on the floor. Uh, I think it's take roll call.
There's discussion, there's discussion, Barbara, to the board about it, discussing it. Um, uh, I have a discussion going. Um, supervisor George, when I was helping him with the meeting last month, I added a webinar feature for this purpose, because when I was attending meetings for somebody else, something similar to this happened. I don't know, I don't even know how to run a Zoom bomb in, but I think something, and we start coming in, and coming in, and then go out, so... I don't think, I want to try to continue, I'm not sure if people are gonna bounce back in, because now you have like 99 messages in the chat. But webinars allow you to only have people in that are speaking in at the call, I was doing people in and out. So we have a better control of... Um, I'm, I just wanted to put that out there, so... That's why, because Burgess and trustee Oliver went on, I got everybody else in the waiting room, because something like this wouldn't happen. Because you have a large number of people on, you don't have that control, which you have this issue. But of course, I was just trying to control that thing. And here is unfortunately what happens. And as much as I would like to come tonight, I'm not going to, because I don't want to be a committee member tonight, so I just want to sit here and let you guys figure out whatever you're going through. Uh, but that is my discussion. Oh, and also, while I'm still discussing it, let me just put this on, right? At the, at the board meeting, all of the internet went out. And so I actually ran that entire board meeting from my cell phone. Just so trustee Burgess and trustee Oliver could look hard at it. And at the end of the meeting, trustee Oliver was upset because she thought I had hung up on her. But we had no internet at all at the township, the entire board. So I ran it from my cellphone, which I didn't have twice, it was my entire hotspot on my phone. Just to ensure that what you were, that you're part of the scene. So, I just, I don't know, I, I, I was just finishing up my discussion. But again, I, I made every effort to make sure that they were part of it. So hopefully, you know, when I was reading, I was glad to get part of it.
We can't hear anything, and it's required that we hear everything.
Um, yes.
Trustee Oliver? That was a no. Trustee Burgess? That was a no. Supervisor George? That was a no, those are three no's for a judge.
The public has to be able to contemporaneously hear the discussion. We heard none of the nos. And it's a requirement of the Open Meetings Act.
Supervisor George is calling for public comments?
We need to be able to hear supervisor George call for public comment, not you tell everybody that he did call for it.
Are we continuing with this? I can't hear anything. I can hear, I can hear you, Lee, but I can't hear you. Okay. And if we are continuing with public comments, I would like my time back.
Trustee Oliver?
What are we...
Huh?
For what? Wait.
Nobody heard that, what did you say?
Yeah, I can't hear anything, I, I don't know what the motion was, I don't know what you're taking roll call for.
Nobody can hear what anybody is saying, it's just all mumbled.
Somebody's speaking, but I can't hear it either. He's muted. They are muted. Seven. Okay, roll call. Okay, it won't, it won't unmute. I can barely hear what you're saying, if you're calling for me, I can't hear you. Call some, you sound like, I, you can't, I can barely hear what you're saying, I hear you say trustee Raga, and, and I, and I...
We are taking a roll call to enter into executive session.
I asked the question to pick my own public comments, where I was truly interrupting.
Public comments have not ended yet, and just as a reminder, you can't discuss trustees in a closed session.
No, can't get you in, somebody hacked in. We have you on speaker, we're going to, uh, roll call vote.
Public comment has not ended yet. Public comment has not ended yet.
See, they're saying John, Ross, John Kraft saying he thinks you're gonna talk, but call. And we can hear you now, but we cannot hear before. And I was not able to finish my public comments after that Zoom bomb, or whatever you guys want to call. I can hear Ken, but that's it, I can't hear anything else on there. Okay, okay, listen to this. Let Lee finish. Lee? Alright, I would like my time to start over again, is that possible? Alright, I just wanted, my name is Lee Bush Jr. I said I surreiously sent an email with my concerns to this board supervisor George about some concerns that I had about COVID-19 that I witnessed and I have known about. Unfortunately, the only email that I received back was from Ms. Benford. Unfortunately, that's who I've heard from, and trustee Raga. Unfortunately, that's who I've heard from, like, Trusty Raga. She is very ticked off at this meeting right now, so I apologize. Uh, this has been very concerning for me that our township in my view has not been following the proper protocol for the CDC. And I just wanted answers or clarifications for the citizens and also for myself and my family. Due to the lack of response or feeling of disrespect that I've gotten, this would have been taken seriously. So I had to send a letter to the Edgar County Watch office. However, three days since sending this, I have yet to hear from anyone else except from a township trustee of Facebook Messenger stating, "Wow, really? You're playing with ECW also?" Shaking my head, "Nothing surprises me anymore." This is very disappointing that a citizen can bring issues to this board and there is no response. I'm about to serve over four hundred and fifty families in this township community and now I unfortunately have to take a step back and worry about this pandemic even more because I've been exposed. I've dedicated my life to helping others for over the better part of forty-four years. Neither have I been asked for a paycheck or even a tap on the shoulder. What I have asked is for respect of the people and that is exactly why I came forward to address this issue and ask for answers for the people of our township. It is a shame now that I've spoken out that I now have to live in fear from this, members of this board that will try to ruin my family's life and my reputation in this town because I haven't had the nerve to speak up for our community. I ask that this issue be addressed for the better and more importantly, safety of our community, especially our elderly residents that were involved. Thank you.
This is Barbara Parker. I have a comment to make in regard to Lee's statement. I can tell you, I was at the last meeting and I can tell you that there were some elected officials and others that were not wearing a mask. And one of them was the name that you mentioned got back to you. So it's being, not being done by all of them. Don't single just somehow saying they're doing good work because they're all not following CDC guidelines.
We know somebody's talking in that meeting, but nobody can hear what they're saying and it's required under the Open Meetings Act that everybody hear what's going on in that meeting room. For what purpose? For what exception are you going into executive session for? My only question is, uh, you don't have any authority to do anything to any trustees. So are you going to discuss trustees or are you going to discuss the investigation like you always, already did a couple of weeks ago?
Investigation, uh, we have a motion. Trusty Oliver, instead of trusty Burgess. Roll call please.
Trusty Bedford.
She's not even in the meeting. She's been picked out of the meeting. She's not in.
Attorney Sackler Dwight Morris grabs in. Dwight, pass, come back. What do I do?
Is she in the, is she in the waiting room or something? Which would mean what happened to her? I mean, it's in the theater.
She wasn't, she's not in the waiting room. She's texted me saying that, uh, she's not being, back in the meeting. That's the toll in the letter. Apparently she's trying to log back in. She's not being in.
Trusty Bedford, can you hear me?
I can hear you, yeah.
We're taking roll call to enter executive session. Trusty Bedford?
I haven't heard any of the discussions, so I don't even know what's going on. I mean, I was, couldn't hear anything since the photo bombing, so I, I don't even know what's going on. Hold on, I have Supervisor George to follow you. Hello?
Hello? I can't hear you.
Trusty Oliver? Trusty Burgess? Supervisor George? Motion to enter executive session at six forty-seven PM.
Dumb question, but I gotta ask. Is this meeting over with?
This is Trusty Bedford. Um, I would like to be able to answer that question, but I actually lost, uh, I could not hear anything at all that transpired once the photo bombed. And then I sat out in the waiting room for a very long time and not even participated in the meeting. And I kept trying to reach everyone to tell them to let me back in. So I have no idea what has been transpired.
It sounds like there's a motion and a vote to go into executive session.
They'll come back after, based on the agenda, they'll come back. It says, the agenda says that to return to an open session if necessary.
We just warned it may not be necessary.
I don't know, so I don't know.
I don't under, I don't understand why isn't now that you can hear.
I, yeah, I couldn't hear anything. Yes, I ended up, and then eventually the Zoom just went away and I ended up calling, uh, calling back in. Hold on, this is the clerk calling you now. Okay, hello?
They have to come back into open session in order to adjourn the meeting at the very least or there might be more discussion when they come back into open session.
Thank you.
And, um, there, uh, so a couple of people, I guess, are waiting to get left into the Zooms.
You know what, I, I, I do see that. I was just kind of worried because of what happened at the board.
Yeah, but it's a public meeting, so you gotta, you gotta let people in.
Okay.
Yeah?
I just did. There we go again.
Get ready to cheer. Get ready to cheer for another.
I'm in. You know, this is just not right. I am not, you know, we're not involved.
We can't hear.
Yes.
Nobody can hear what is being said. We have to be able to hear what is being said. We hear about every third word or fourth word. We could not hear the motion. We could not hear the motion.
Ross, can you hear?
I can hear when you talk, then.
After weeks of investigation, review of the investigation of trustee Bedford's harassment, thing of an employee at the DuPage Township, I'd like to make a motion to censure trustee Bedford for her behavior.
That's not on the agenda. That is not on the agenda. It's an illegal motion. That's an illegal motion. You cannot censure a trustee to begin with, and you can't do it unless it's on the agenda, on the agenda for the second part. That's an illegal motion. That is an illegal motion. That is an illegal motion.
You're not allowed to talk, Ross.
I don't care. That's an illegal motion. If they can do stuff illegal, so can I. Nobody can hear what you're saying. That's an illegal censure, whatever it was. It didn't make any sense. It was illegal. You cannot do it. It violates state law. Violations of the Open Meetings Act are a class C misdemeanor. You will be hearing from it when we file a motion in the court. I suggest you retract that motion. It was not on the agenda. You can't talk about it. Nobody can hear what you're saying. You can't even, you can't even make that motion because it was not on the agenda.